Good evening, everyone. Tonight is January 24th, 2024. It is 6:03 PM, and I would like to call to order the City of Columbus City Council meeting for tonight. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us if you'd like to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight is approval of the consent agenda. Would anyone like to make the motion to approve?
This is Ron. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second the motion. Is there any questions, discussions, or changes anyone would like to see? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Our next, onto letter C quickly, is the public open forum. Is there anyone who would like to speak either online or in the room at the public open Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to number 10, which is approval of the 2024 citywide recycle events on page one of our packet tonight. And I see Lori's online to guide us through it. Would you like to guide us through it, Lori?
She muted.
Huh?
She muted.
Oxigen, yeah.
Are you muted, Lori? Can you hear us? Hang on, we'll keep trying. We still cannot hear you. We can see you, but we can't hear you. Still cannot.
You can hear me now?
Well, we do.
There we are.
All right.
Okay, I'll start again. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I wanted you to first page on the agenda packet. And I am going, as noted, I have proposed not only six, seven events for this year, as I was scheduled for the Anoka County in April. So I am, this brings, as you know, we will have the, and that will be held on sixth, and they gave us ten in the time schedule. Then again, May eighth will be a bicycle drop off, the hall, followed with events on May 11th with the drop off and shredding. I wanted to bring your attention to last year's, we collected 68 bikes, 69 tons from the drop off at Curbside. So at this point, I wanted to ask you to have any for the events for 2024.
So this is Sue. I just have one question. It looks like a lot of the events are the same as last year. And I was just wondering, now you mentioned the bike drop off, how many bikes were dropped off? And that's a lot of bikes, so that was successful. Are the other ones just as successful? Well attended?
Council members, Wegman, we had an amazing turnout for the summer curbside event. So that is where we had 55 stops. In the past, we had maybe 12.
Okay.
With that note, to do it only one day, a Friday, and this is, last year was the first year we opened it up for a whole week, which made it very successful.
Okay, thank you. Lori, this is Janet. Is the same company going to be doing the curbside event as last year?
Yes, we will have all appliance disposal. And the paper shredding, most will be pro-shred, as in the past.
And you were breaking up a little bit, so can you just talk about the Fix-It Clinic again? It sounded like-
Fix-It Clinic will be April 6th, 10 o'clock, where residents in electrical boxes and they have volunteers from Anoka that will try, and it best is incidents.
Thank you.
Any other questions, anyone? If not, then I'll make the motion to approve the proposed citywide recycling events as noted on the January 24th, 2024 staff report. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
On to number 11. On this regards, the election judges for this coming year, pages two and three of our report.
Before we proceed with that, I'd like to make a correction on the resolution number that should be 24-02. And this resolution is for the appointment of the election judges for the presidential nomination primary election on March 5th, 2024, and the appointment of the balloting board. The list of judges is listed in Exhibit A, along with the nomination, or the people that will be on the balloting board for that election. So if there's anyone that has any questions about that, I'll be glad to answer them.
Seeing no questions.
Oh, I just have a quick question. This is Sue. Is this the normal amount of judges that we have, that we've had in the past, or is there a number that we need to have?
We run two shifts, so it's double really what it is, so this is pretty close to the normal amount we have. And if there's one or two extra, they're used as backups in case somebody else can't serve for that day.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2402, Resolution Appointing Election Judges for the Presidential Nomination Primary Election to be held on March 5th, 2024. Is there a second?
Rob, I'll second that motion.
Any other questions or discussions?
Can I vote on this?
Why not?
We didn't vote yet.
Well, I'm just saying, my wife's name's down there.
Oh.
You can, because there's no financial benefit to you directly.
Okay, so she can't give me that money?
Well, you can also recuse yourself if you'd be more comfortable. It's a nominal amount.
Okay.
Well, Bill, the only difference would be if he was running for election, right?
Yes.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. And now, we're on to number 12 quickly, Recording Secretarial Services Proposal. Check.
City staff is requesting that city council consider contracting minutes taken out to a recording secretarial service. As you can see in your little brief staff report, city staff spends a lot of time preparing these minutes, approximately 440 hours a year. Contracting this out would allow staff time to be devoted to other more important duties than the minute taking. And from what I've experienced in the past, we can contract this out for essentially the same cost it does us to do the minutes, or maybe less. So staff is requesting that city council approve staff to get proposals for this service, bringing them back at the February 14th meeting for consideration.
Anyone have any questions?
So I'd just like to add, excuse me, we talked about this yesterday at our Personnel Committee meeting, and we're supportive of this, of this recommendation as well. It's something that we did pursue a few years ago, and actually had hired somebody who then, very soon after the hire, decided she didn't want to do it anymore, and we kind of reverted back to the same, the same process. At that time, there wasn't the opportunity to contract with, I think, the firm that you're thinking about. It sounds like they have some capacity now to take us on, so this isn't, this isn't a new idea. It's something that we were thinking about and actually wanted to do, but couldn't because we didn't have the, we didn't have the people or the company that could provide the service.
And as a follow-up to Janet's statement, we can get the minutes turned around in six days. Sometimes when staff's doing it, certain things come up, there's a delay, you may not get the minutes for two or three weeks. That makes it more difficult to go through them and see if there's any corrections made. Also, it's removing staff from the interpretation of what goes in the minutes. And again, more importantly, it could be a cost savings or a cost neutral item and allow staff that extra time to do additional duties or functions, or those things in their job descriptions that they may not have time to do because of the minutes.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve for the city staff to see proposals for recording secretarial services and present this information to the city council at the February 14th, 2024 meeting for consideration as an action item. Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
Are there any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Staff and consultant reports. Engineer report. Kevin, I see you're online.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Just one short report and one question, discussion item. First item is, I'm scheduled to attend a meeting tomorrow between the DNR and the Rice Creek Watershed District in order to discuss engineering and modeling of ditch 102232, and probably more so impacts to the public water system. So it's kind of a kickoff meeting, so I'm not sure what all will be entailed at this point, but that's tomorrow at 11:00 AM, so, and I will be in attendance. Second item related to 102232, and I know that some of you are aware of this, Rice Creek Watershed District Board has requested that I present the presentation that I gave to you as part of our council workshop meeting earlier in the month. I guess I just want to make sure, or I guess I just want to discuss this in terms of whether that's, is appropriate or not. That presentation was targeted for you, the city council. It was not targeted to the Watershed District Board. My understanding is that when those board members and representatives who were in attendance gave their report back to the board following our meeting, it was requested that I come and present my presentation for their record. I'm a little uncomfortable with that at this point, but if you feel it's appropriate that I do so, I will, I will give them my presentation. But most of the information that I provided to you was gleaned from their records and their, and the reports, so I wouldn't really be presenting any new information, although there are some recommendations, obviously, that were geared specifically for the city council. So I just wanted to get your feedback on that and direction.
Kevin, this is the mayor. If, if that's how you feel about it, and kind of a recommendation to us, I'm fine with that. Anyone else have questions or discussion?
I'd actually like to hear if Bill has any comments on it. You know, clearly, everything was said in a public meeting, so there aren't any secrets or anything, but, I mean, we've, we've been present when there's been discussion at that board meeting, more in a, sort of like assigning responsibility or blame for whatever the problem is. And I, I guess, I just want to, would want to make sure that, you know, something that was informational for us isn't going to get misconstrued as accepting responsibility or, or liability for what, you know, the flooding problem in that area. So how do you feel about that?
My initial, Mayor and Council, my initial reaction, it was, it was what I liked about the presentation, you know, obviously, our city engineer is a professional, but he did it in such a way that laypeople could understand the problem. So I think it took a fairly complex subject and, and made it accessible. So from that standpoint, I thought it was a positive. I think, if I'm reading Kevin correctly, his concern is he, he doesn't work for them, he works for you. I think that can be covered simply by stating that, you know, that, that we're doing this as a courtesy and as cooperation between governmental entities that are trying to address this problem. But by and large, I thought the findings were helpful, and so if they're in the record at Rice Creek, I don't see that as a negative. On the other hand, you could achieve the same end by simply sending the presentation to them with a cover letter, you know, seeking continued cooperation or something to that effect. So I'm not quite sure why that wouldn't suffice, and they want a full presentation from our city engineer. I don't think there, I don't think there's anything in that document that concludes that somehow we're responsible for the flooding problem. In fact, to the contrary, it basically says, you know, there isn't a simple solution, there's a number of things that could be done. Our city engineer kind of aligned with the recommendation of the technical staff for the district. So those are my thoughts. I don't see, I don't see a liability for restating what's already public, but I also see an alternative as simply just providing the presentation in a written form.
Do you think it'd be helpful for Kevin to just sort of make that statement upfront?
The statement that-
That was really, that this, that this presentation was initially developed to be informational to the council at a workshop. It's not meant to draw any firm conclusions about why and when, and, I mean, just, just to make, just to make it really clear that there's, this isn't, this isn't the official stance of the city.
I do think, I do think we could come up with, Kevin and I can just kind of do a little back and forth on kind of what the opening statement might look like. It is, it is fairly unusual. On the other hand, I can think of many opportunities that we've taken to go to the Met Council, or go to the DNR, or go to other agencies with a particular position or information. And I wouldn't want to see our concerns about protocol or liability to stop the kind of cooperation that I think is forming around this issue. So those are my, my thoughts. But I understand where Kevin's saying it, you know, kind of, I don't work for you, I don't work for the district, but I'm, you know, here's my information.
Yeah, this is Sue. I just have one comment, because I know they talked about it at the watershed meeting this morning. And, I mean, the information is online in their packet, that they want to have Kevin come and give it, so they have it on the record. So I would just ask that you guys talk about it, maybe after this meeting, and just ensure that the information is appropriate. However, you're going to preface it if we are going to do that, because I think they were excited that they heard something in that meeting that would help them.
We can go back over the notes, Kevin, you and I, and talk about anything that, that might be concerning.
Yeah, I mean, this is Kevin again, and I guess I don't want anything that I presented to the council. Obviously, I represent you to be used against the city or the council in terms of, you know, and maybe I'm stretching a little bit, but being used against the city in terms of public cooperation or financial obligations or what have you. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
And I think, you know, the, the general principle is that no one council member, no one consultant, no one executive can bind the, the city and bind the council. So for, for that reason, I'm not concerned that, that Kevin's statements can bind the city. But I don't remember there being a got you, you know, in the, in the presentation. I think it was pretty carefully prepared and stated. And yet, you know, my, my feeling after listening to it, and, and some of the back and forth then with the district was, this is a good thing. You know, there's a conversation going on, on a pretty important matter in Columbus, and while we're, it's, it's slow headway, it seems like we're starting to make some headway, so.
This is going to sound very petty, but who's paying for your time?
Are you talking my time?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they did make an offer of paying for my time, so that's something that I could build to the district directly. I mean, I just, if, if it's going to be a matter of just providing them the presentation, it's not a, it's not a large effort in, in the, in a, in a hard, hardcover format or electronic format, that, that's not a big deal. It's not a lot of time, and, and Bill and I working out some language for a cover letter isn't a significant effort. But if I were to prep it and present it, obviously, we're talking a few hours of work, and it's probably worthy to be billed to the, to the district at that point.
I would agree. Thank you.
So what's the direction, everybody? Go to the meeting? Just send a printed copy to them?
No, I think, I think what I heard was that Bill and, and Kevin will kind of meet and talk about sort of how to tee this up as a presentation, addressing the concerns that we brought up, and then he'll go and do the presentation, and he'll bill, if he decides to bill, he'll bill them for his time and effort.
Yep, that's what I heard.
In a personal, in a live, live show, live presentation, not the printed?
Yep.
Right? Do we need a motion on that, or direction, or?
No, I think you've given direction to Kevin, and as your city engineer, I think you can go forward and do that.
Are you comfortable with that, Kevin?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page in regards to how you wanted me to respond to the district on this request. So I appreciate the direction.
Anything else from you tonight?
I have nothing else, Mayor.
Thank you. Attorney's report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just a quick update on our legislative agenda and efforts. We met last week as a steering group, and I got started with our work. Tammy Omdol was present and went through some more data. We're trying, as we said, to synthesize a very complex conversation into a couple of bullet points. I think we're, we're making headway in that regard. We will meet again this week. In fact, it'll be a weekly Friday meeting, virtually through the session, with the understanding that when things get busy, we, we will be able to cancel those weekly meetings if there's something going on at the Capitol. So again, just to remind everybody, we have two bills we're proposing, one addressing the fiscal disparities and equities that fall on the city, and we're getting to, to understand those better every, every time we meet. And then also, we're making a capital bonding request for North Hornsby, for that segment between Forest Lake and the newer section of North Hornsby that was completed in the Northeast Quad. So those are two bills that we hope to drop early in session and work through the legislative process to get some relief from the city and hopefully some road funding.
Very good.
Couple other quick points in the legislative agenda. Again, just a reminder for your calendars, March 7th is the Day on the Hill, and we're going to schedule it pretty much as we did last time, with a lunch introduction at our St. Paul office, and then off to the Senate and the House for some meetings with legislators. And final item is, I did send you some guidance on, you're not lobbyists, so unless you decide to go into the lobbying business and accept a fee, just by showing up at the Capitol doesn't mean that you're a lobbyist under the new law, but thank you for raising that question, because it caused me to, to pull up the law and take a look and give you some guidance, so appreciate that.
So what time should we be at your office, on the 7th of?
By noon.
By noon.
And that, that'll allow members who want to attend the League of Minnesota Cities program in the morning, you can do both. You can do the league program, join us for lunch, or even join us after lunch, as you like.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mayor and City Council members report. Ron, I'll start with you.
Just thinking, I don't have really much. Just, I met with Lieutenant Slavik of Anoka County, with our city, Jack, you know, a week ago Thursday, and she's going to introduce two new police officers that we have in our city. It should be upcoming, isn't it? In February. In February. And talk about other issues like the, that training on, what was that, active shooter they were going to have, that captain, is he a captain, Lunsner? Yeah, Investigator Chris Beck. Oh, it's Chris Beck? Okay. So that's what's upcoming, so I guess Jack will tell us when that comes. Yeah, she'll get back to us on the scheduling. That's about all, yeah.
I can start with our Personnel Committee report. So we did a lot of work over the last week or so, and we do have some things here that we want approval from the council to move forward with. And the first one I'm going to explain is the organizational chart. So let me back up a second. So we are ready to post our position for our administrator within the next week, and along with that, we will have a, of course, a job description, an application form, the brochure, which is in your packet, and then the organization, the proposed organizational chart. And so Janet's going to talk about the brochure and the job description, but I, I wanted to mention the organizational chart. I came to the city today, I met with the staff, to kind of explain it a little bit, because this is a proposed, it's not for approval that this, we'd be going forward with this. We want to post this in, with our brochure and job description and job application, so the people who are applying for the position see that we have a thought-out plan. And one of the things that Ellen was hired for and has helped us with is kind of structuring our organization more efficiently, since we've grown as a city over the last several years in workload and in city staff. And so she's helped us to kind of form what we think would be an appropriate organizational structure. But the plan is, this would not be put into place until we hire the new administrator. That person would take a look at it, get a, you know, feel for the city, get, get in the groove of the position, and then have input into this. So what, what Ellen suggested, and we agreed, is that we create a director-level layer, which would be the first, so when you look, the first three columns under the city administrator that are colored, kind of- that are colored kind of lavender, green, and blue. The first one is Director of Administration, and that is an open position. We don't have a job posting for that one yet. It was in, it was actually the position that Jessica held when she was here. But when she left, we tweaked that position a little bit and talked about the needs of having kind of an expanded role there and also have direct reports under that position. So that position, like I said, it doesn't have a job description yet. That would wait until we do hire the permanent administrator and make the determination at that point what is really needed in that position.
Can I just add one thing? So this position, we had previously described as the Assistant Two or the Assistant City Administrator position. And I think we budgeted for it. We have budgeted for it for the last two years. We have not filled it, and in part because we were kind of trying to figure out, should it be an Assistant Two, should it be an Assistant position? And this is, this is where Ellen's been so helpful to, you know, to get us kind of focused on what the title should be and what the scope of responsibility should be. So it's a different title. It might look new, but it's actually kind of been on the planning for at least a couple of years. Thank you, sorry.
Thanks. The next, in the green, we have the Director of Finance and Deputy Treasurer, and that's an open position. We do have a name in there because we have a candidate that we believe would be a great fit for that position. So we're looking at that along with opening one position, which is the Accounting Assistant. And that is the only really new position that we don't, we don't have a budget for right now, but we do have funds that weren't used and other positions that would be used for that, for that role.
So I'll just, again, chime in here. I think the funds that we had budgeted for the Associate Planner are just going to get redirected to fund this position because it's a more, it's a more immediate need. So it should, it should be pretty budget neutral to, you know, to what we came up with. And then I just wanted to ask a question because I know when you gave us that nice, sent that nice summary, is Carissa's switch to reporting to Cheryl, that's an immediate change, isn't it?
That would be yes.
Yeah, so just clearly, you know, when we're talking about these things aren't going to happen until the city administrator, permanent city administrator, I think that's one exception to that.
Yes.
To that rule. And then the hiring of the Accounting Assistant is the other exception because that's an immediate need.
Yes, thanks for clarifying that.
And one other way to look at that Finance Director position is, I think we previously discussed that more as a job reclassification rather than an open position and had discussed that with an employee. And we're just waiting for the job description on that for her to review to make sure that she's comfortable with that.
And I would, I'll just add one more thing. You know, when we were in the process of hiring for the current position, if you might remember, we had a consultant in this position for quite a while who was, she was amazing, but was not available for hire. But what she really brought to bear was that we needed a higher level accounting person than what we had had in the past. And Cheryl's done a great job of filling not just the sort of day-to-day stuff, but also, you know, getting things kind of cleaned up and in order and getting things ready so that she, you know, she or somebody could move into a position where we would have not just, you know, responsible accounting and more regular reporting to the council, but the ability to do some special reports and analyses that we've just never had and have wanted to have. So this will allow us to have that. And by freeing up some of the time, a lot of the time that she spends doing sort of transactional things like accounts payable and accounts receivable and payroll and things like that, that will move to this, to this new position.
So, quick question on that. We had that figured in the budget for this next fiscal year.
We have, we have an Associate Planner. We've been budgeting for that, so we'll hold off on hiring that and direct those funds to this position.
Okay, thank you.
There's actually $61,000, $61,700 in the budget for that position. And with the pay grades, it would be associated with the Assistant Accounting Person, there would be more than ample funds to cover that.
Okay.
And when you figure two, it's probably only going to be three quarters of the year. There'd still be a balance left.
Thank you, Jack.
The only other, so the blue column is the Director of Public Works, Jim, who, that would not change. We have three employees under Jim. And the only thing, there is an extra box here because we're looking at designating leads in certain areas. So it wouldn't be a new position. It would be, I mean, it wouldn't be an additional position. It'd just be clarification of roles.
And actually, we haven't, this has been a sort of a verbal ask, and we've not seen anything. So this is for sure not a, not a for sure thing. We haven't seen really what the position needs are or anything like that, so.
And that's why we had the TBD designation in that to be determined. So that's still something that's ongoing and can be, and will be clarified at a later date.
And then we have Sean, and nothing's changed there. It's just that we wanted to make sure that he reports directly to the city administrator.
Well, actually, I think there is, we were talking about transitioning, his current title is Inspector. And I think we were discussing transitioning that to an official level position, which typically is sort of analogous to a Director.
He informed us today that there was a potential problem with classifying him as a code enforcement, the key word being enforcement official, with his parastatus. And said it was recommended that it be changed to Code Compliance Official.
I think that is what his title is. I think he's a Code Compliance Inspector right now.
It is Inspector now.
Yeah, yeah.
And you would have him as an official.
And that's the change. It would be to elevate it to a Director level position, but instead of being called a Director, it'd be official because that's typically what they're called.
It was a concern due to his previous employment, right? There were some guidelines around what he could and couldn't be called.
Yes, they were having a hard time delineating what we were having him do from being a police officer.
Yeah.
So the rest of this is just our consultants and our commissions and boards, which nothing has changed there, just on the, it's on the chart as reporting up to the new administrator. So that is the, that is the proposed organizational chart. So this is what we want to place with the application, job description, and brochure. So I don't know, Janet, did you want to talk about the brochure at all?
Yeah, do we want to get, do we want to get a motion to accept this first or?
Do you want to do them separate?
Yeah, I think so.
We have to, okay.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to approve the proposed organizational chart prepared by the Personnel Committee dated January 24th, 2024.
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion or questions? Anyone? No? Rob, anything?
No, sir.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. So now, when this is put together, this goes with this?
Yep, I'll talk about that in just a minute. So I think we should, since, since this kind of fits in with the org chart, the Accounting Assistant, it's a position that we would be posting. So generally, we come back to the council for approval to move forward with posting a new position. So you have a copy of what the job description looks like. And you've heard how we plan to fund it. It should be budget neutral or better for this year. And, you know, willing to take any questions that you have on that. Otherwise, I'll move forward with that motion. Questions? So then I would move to approve the Accounting Assistant Position, Job Description, and Authorization to post for this opening.
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Okay, and then I'm just going to give you a quick update on where we're at with our search. So at a prior meeting, you had authorized us to move forward with conducting the search internally. I had shared with you a proposed search outline. This was around the end of December and all the different steps that had to be taken. So we have, as Sue said, been working really hard. We plan to have the position ready to be posted by next Friday. There'll be a four-week period that it will be posted. And it will be posted in all of the places that the external search firms were going to post. So then, and on that, on that spread around that table that I gave you, we listed all of the different places it would be posted. The applications will be directed to a new email that's being set up on the city's Outlook platform. So it'll be columbusrecruitment@ci.columbus, or columbus.cii, whatever the domain thing is. So what that means is that all correspondence that is done related to this position, as well as all the applications, will be on the city's platform. And those of us on the Personnel Committee will have access to it. So we'll all be able to see what's, you know, being communicated. We'll all be able to see what's being submitted. Ellen is going to be doing the screening of the applicants and presenting to us sort of a summary. And then what we would do is, we would come to you with a recommendation for four to six semifinalists. She will also, once we conduct those or narrow it down to the semifinalists, then she will also do the video interviews. And then those would be available for you. So we would be able to use those to whittle the four to six down to two finalists. Sue's been working really hard at trying, trying to define our criteria for selecting or scoring the applications to get us down to that four to six. And so we had a draft that we looked at yesterday. We gave some feedback. She's going to be working on that, and we were hoping that we can have that finalized after our Tuesday meeting next week. And so that will be in place in time for us to have the posting. The other thing that we talked about is what would be on our website. So the website is one place that is going to be advertising for the position, but it's also sort of the repository of documents. So the official city application form will be on the website. The job description will be on the website, which you've seen a copy of that. We're actually just doing a final review and a kind of final tweaking of that. The org chart that you just saw will be on the website. And then we developed this recruitment brochure, which is one of the things that the search firm would have done for us. So this is really meant to give all applicants kind of an introduction to Columbus as a city and what our city government looks like, what the staffing looks like. And then it describes the core duties and minimum requirements of the position, as well as sort of what our dream candidate would look like. And then it tells them how to apply. You'll see in the, in the brochure that we've listed the salary range, 122,000 to 162,000. This was arrived at after looking at three different databases of salary ranges for city administrators, as well as some input from Megan in her experience of seeing what other communities in the Twin Cities area are using. It's really not that far off from what our current range is. And then, of course, depending on the experience of the candidates, will depend on where they fall within that salary range. There's a couple of things on the how to apply that are still not defined. I'm going to be working with Connor on the URL for the, you know, that we can shorten up and make reasonable for people to enter in. And then this brochure is going to be electronic, so it'll be a live link. They can click on it and it will take them right there. It's not going to be something that we're going to have printed copies of. And then our deadline for applying, I just have to go back and like recalculate backwards. And I hadn't had time to do that, so that's the other thing. So if you have any suggestion, or not suggestions, but any edits to this or things that you think are missing, let me know because we're going to try to finalize this tomorrow so that it's ready to go. Do you have any additions to add to that, Sue?
No, just that, what a beautiful brochure it is.
Yeah, it turned out really nice.
It, it looks better online even than it does on the, on the sheet. It's, it's very beautiful pictures, very well-written.
Well, I'll thank Connor for the pictures. He went through and compiled a thumb drive of all of the pictures that we had that would be helpful in this kind of thing. And so that was, that was really helpful. And then Vito Design did the, did the layout and the design of it. So that was really helpful and very cost-effective.
Yes, and I think it really portrays our city well. Oh, I'm excited for that.
Okay.
Anything else?
The only other thing I was going to mention is that I was at the, and so was Ron, at the Lion's Pancake Breakfast on Sunday. I think they had probably more there than usual, don't you? It was really well-attended.
Yeah, I came back around noon and it was still around here at 1:00.
Yeah, yeah. So I think it's bouncing back to pre-COVID levels of attendance, and so that's, that's good. It's nice to see lots of good community interactions and neighbors talking to one another. And if you sit next to Ron, half of the people in Columbus will come over and say hello because everybody knows him, so.
I probably owe him money.
Pulled him over once.
Rob, anything?
So council, council members, all of us, some of the Planning Commission members attended a flag-raising ceremony at the new truck alliance facility that's up off the highway just south of Love's Truck Stop. It was a great event. Connor was there as well, several others. I'm sorry if I'm missing someone. Got a tour of the facility, got explanation of what it is they do inside that facility. And then we're able to stick around to chat with the owners and some of their vendors throughout a lunch event. So very happy that they're in Columbus. They were as well. I think the rest of the council are pretty happy. I don't want to speak for you about how that building turned out. Looks very nice, so. And we have our third, third huge flag right on the highway there in Columbus, so that's, it's pretty cool. I'm calling us probably the most patriotic community in the metro, so. Other than that, do you want me to do my Planning Commission report later on?
Let me, it's a different order tonight.
Yep.
I don't know why. Let me give my report, which is pretty short and sweet, but I'd like to welcome, introduce everybody and welcome them to Columbus Troop 9414. It used to be 414, I heard, then they added a 9, 10 or 20 years ago. So they're here to work on their communications merit badge. So that means they're listening and seeing how well the wheels of government work, especially in Columbus, and what we can do when we get done, which shouldn't be too long. We can come up here and take a picture with all you guys, and all of us councilmen will stand in back, then you can prove where you were tonight. How's that? All right, now, we'll move on to the Planning Commission report, pages 6 through 13. Rob?
Yeah, thank you. I just got some brief notes here. Tim McConner, the owner of LCI Landscapes, which will, will and is be located at 13960 Lake Drive, had a representatives, two representatives from Bluenemental Architects answer questions. Requests were for deviation from standards of 50% metal siding.
from standards of 50% metal siding on the exterior. The business has been operating for several years as non-compliant. They're looking for outside storage, where we responded that, that would be okay as long as it was properly screened from the road. Bobbick shared concerns of the shipping containers that were on site. And there were questions about use of pole buildings. The answer was that'll be used for maintenance of their equipment. Hours were to be, I believe, between seven, seven in the morning and seven at night. They didn't express a lot of loud concerns of loud noise with backup beepers and things, as that was a question and concern of mine. There was concerns from the planning commission about possibly having some camper trailers on site. In the end, it actually ended up being, the Incorax site was likely a neighbor's site that had those RV campers and campers on site and ATVs. The applicant will be at the next scheduled planning meeting, and that is on 13124. Is there anything I might have missed? I know other council were on via Zoom as well as in, in person. Is there anything you might want to add to
I've got a question. I think on page eight of our thing there. They talk about the long term, about building a building. Maybe at your next meeting, you can explain to them. I guess they have to open up the CUP then again? Am I correct? If, if they, if they get a CUP, then they want to put a new building on there? Would that open up the CUP again?
Not necessarily. The CUP could provide for expansion, as long as it's compliant with the, you know, the building requirements, building code, and building materials requirements. The, you know, one of the things, we, we have a history in Columbus, Lake Drive, of approving conditional use permits for businesses. And really, what you're approving is the use, under state law, you're approving the land use, not the business. So as long as the use doesn't change, and the building complies with building code and planning code requirements, it could be processed as a site plan approval. On the other hand, if that building also means that the, the use is going to shift or change, then it would require an amendment. So that's a distinction that I think is important, as we go back to the planning commission with this application, for them to understand what it is that, that's being approved. And what's being approved is the land use and all that goes with it, and the conditions of operation of that land use. So it, it would be probably a judgment call at the time that building comes in. If it, if it complies completely with zoning and the conditions of approval, then it could be done on a site plan. If it doesn't, then you reopen the conditional use permit.
So, when he talks about this, it wasn't asked, and I know this is in the future, but is he going to keep the building that was there? Or is he going to replace that one? Because I think the PUD was kind of letting them go on 50%.
Yeah. So to my understanding, it's, it's a residential building that's on site, and they would be remodeling that residential building, upgrading the sewer well if needed to accommodate X amount of employees that may be on site. I also did ask, is there going to be any housing of workers? You know, typically with landscape businesses, there might be seasonal workers that might be in town. And, and he, he did confirm that there'd be no one living on site. And what prompted that question is the campers, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You typically see that at sod fields and stuff like that. So I just wanted to make sure they weren't going to be housing people in the basement or something.
I was just wondering, the pole building, no, they're going to keep that?
Yep.
And if they put in another building, they're talking about a new building, not destroying that one?
To, to the best of my understanding, what I heard is they wanted, they wanted to keep that pole shed. And it, it wasn't part of the meeting, but speaking with them a little after, they were trying to, the architect was trying to figure out how, how they could put the exterior brick on there and whatnot. And he was stating that they'll probably do an exterior insulation system to try and accommodate what we want. But it seemed like they were open to accommodate whatever reasonable concerns we wanted taken care of, so.
I just wondered during that process, I must have missed something, but I just didn't know what they were going to do. And I, I thought when they keep, like when I read this, in the future, long-term plan, I didn't know when they're, they're going to do it and what they were going to do, take that building out or put in another one, so.
So I think that, if I remember correctly, the PUD is because the pole barn wouldn't meet our building standards right now. And so that's, that was the question there. And they would have to bring the residential building up to commercial standards. So in addition, I think to the things that, that council member Bush said, you know, I don't know what that means. And, you know, and I don't think anybody knows what it means until an inspector comes in there and looks at it and says, yeah, the wirings are, is okay, or no, that needs to be upgraded, whatever. So my question, now that you brought it up, and I didn't think about it that night, is the application is going forward, making the assumption that they are going to upgrade that residential building to commercial standards. But if at some point they decide it's not worth it, and they, it would be, make more sense, then does it reopen? Because then it would be demolition and rebuilding, or?
It could. I, I think that the question is always, so the, the application is for a specific use and a certain intensity of use, how many employees and parking spaces and so on. So that if the demolition of the building and the replacement of the building substantially alters the facts as you know them when it came in, then it should be amended, at least to update your understanding of the facts, but then also the conditions of approval that would run with it.
Right.
If, on the other hand, it's simply, you know, replacing a building, and it's not a like-kind, but at least the business intensity is a like-kind, then you could do that on a site plan and a building permit. So that's the, that's the judgment call that would be made by, initially by staff, and then it would come through the planning commission and the council. So staff always has to look at that and say, okay, is this a change of use?
Mm-hmm.
You know, based on intensification? Or is it the same use being accommodated in, in new buildings?
And I think, you know, I mentioned this to, to Dean after the meeting, is that I think it, it also really, because they've been operating in a non-compliant fashion in, in large part, not, you know, because of just timing of our moratorium and things like that. I think it's going to be really important for our conditions to have some expectation of a timeframe, because they've been in that site for almost two years now. And so, you know, if you say, yes, you, you know, your septic system needs to be brought up to code, well, typically that's done at point of sale. It wasn't in this case, for whatever reason. And so you might want to say within what, whatever's reasonable, right? Or, or any of the other conditions, whether it has to do with, you know, the, the upgrade on the pole barn or whatever. I just think that it, it will be important to have whatever our expectation for timing is. And I don't have any at this point in time, but whatever that turns on to be, I think it should be built into the conditions, because it's such an unusual situation where there's been, you know, the, the business has been operating there for a couple of years, sort of without any guidelines in, in place. And I think that it would be really easy for them to say, well, you know, what's reasonable for us is three years from now, and what's reasonable for the city might be very different, so.
Mr. Mayor and Council, one of the things we do, first of all, we use our development agreements, most often when there's public improvements involved. But we've also used our development agreements where improvements are being phased in, or there's some relief being given, and there's kind of a understanding that that, that relief is either temporary or, you know, is going to be phased out, or a project's being phased.
Mm-hmm.
So it would seem, it might seem appropriate here, and we can discuss it when it gets back to council, whether you want to have a development agreement to really monitor in buying that compliance.
Yeah.
Yep, that's all.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Jim, Public Works report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we talked about fire hall roof replacement for 2025. We've kind of been battling that roof a little bit here for the last few years, and I think we are going to have to push it to 2024. It currently has at least one leak in it now that we're not able to come up with where it's leaking from. And I think at some point we've kind of bought our time on a 1998 rubber roof. So I'm actively seeking some bids on what the replacement will cost. And I'm hoping to have those, that information for you on the February 14th meeting, so we can have a discussion on that and hopefully move forward with that. So that's all I have. I just wanted to kind of give you a little update, since it was on the, on the job for '25, not '24, but I don't think we can wait another year. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Connor, Public Communications report.
No report from me this evening, Mr. Mayor.
And again, thank you for getting all the photos and all this. That worked. City Administrators report. Jack?
Thank you, Jesse. I have two announcements rather than reports. One is a reminder that the Anoka County Local Government Officials Meeting is next Tuesday, January 30th, 6:00 PM at the Bunker Hills Activity Center. If anyone wants to attend, they can let me know. I can RSVP. I sent you out a memo earlier that had the agenda and the menu on it. So if you want to attend, let me know, and I can handle the details on getting you registered for that. The other announcement that I have is our Local Board of Appeals and Assessment meeting has been set for April 30th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. I believe that's on a Tuesday, and the continuation meeting would be the week after that if necessary. Currently, we have four council members that are certified to do the LBA representation, so we're in good shape there. So we'll be sending out a notice to the paper 10 days in advance of that meeting, and we'll try to get the assessors' reports as quickly as possible to you, and try to get you, all the people that are going to list, the people that are going to try to appeal their evaluation. So if you want to go out and take a look at it to get a better feel for it, you'll get a little review before the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Then I'll move on to letter E, which is the announcements and reminders. Park Board meeting, January 20th, 2024, 5:30.
30th.
Oh, I'm sorry, 30th, 2024. Local Government Officials Meeting, January 30th, 2024, 6:00. Planning Commission, February 7th at 6:00. Economic Development, February 13th, 2024, at 5:30. City Council Workshop, February 13th at 6:30. City Council Meeting, February 14th at 20, or 2024 at 6:00. And the whole calendar is on the back as usual. Is there anything else anyone would like to add, or if not, all. Call for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. I second. This is Janet.
Call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Our meeting is adjourned for tonight. Thank you, everybody.